Have a concentration on infrastructure for the evening. I hope that your packet on Friday provided you with good information. It was really a follow-up from the last meeting that we had, which provided you with some demographic information, as well as what we're attempting to do each Friday is make sure that we follow up the questions that you have from that previous Tuesday, as well as give you a quick synopsis of each of the subcommittee meetings, because each council member is not a part of each subcommittee meeting. So in an effort to provide you with information, we hope that that was useful this past weekend. With that said, I will turn it over for Council Consul.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah.
Try to duck that again. There was a company over behind, it's a little industrial area over behind Stormbridge Manor, there's a company over there called Balkan, and I spoke to Frank about it, as well as James Rogers. And the asphalt has accumulated a very great height, and it's an impact on the neighbors who live in that community, Stormbridge Manor. Now environmentally, I don't know whether it's, you know, anything that can happen with that, but in the summertime, it's really, you know, a nuisance because of the aroma that permeates the air around the neighborhood. So if we can look into that, find out if there are violations that we can have EPA to cite them for, and see what they can do to make, I guess, make living a little bit more pleasant for those individuals over in that community.
We'll look at that.
Okay. And I guess, I don't know at what length we'll talk about this article about Tommy's good friend, Ed Clark, in regards to the, you know, our next move. And if we do, I don't know whether it'll be public or private, but something we need to talk about.
Are we gonna talk about it today?
I'm happy to. Want to go into a closed session, discuss this litigation? If we have time, then I'm happy to.
Why don't we, since Tommy and I are gonna be there tomorrow night at the meeting, maybe we oughta have it forwarded, so be sure to get it in.
Well, one of the things we want to do is have everybody here. And so if you guys are gonna go meet with them tomorrow, then I think it would be appropriate to wait till, we got a work session next week, or is that a work session?
They probably need some information.
Yeah.
They can, Paul and Andy can look it up on TV. I think we need to talk about it.
If we have a closed session, it would be on TV.
But I don't think, I don't think we need to hold up, though. I think we need to talk about it.
Okay, well, we'll look at, see how we look.
I think we oughta.
And Mr. Barkley, my friend.
Yeah, I just wanna continue to follow up on the meeting with our federally elected state officials on the flooding. I don't want that to be buried somewhere. Where are we on that?
We've had several discussions, Councilman Winn. As a matter of fact, we've even reached out to the state of Louisiana. So we're making a great deal of progress in a very short period of time, making sure we get the right people around the table to talk through it. So it's not on the back burner at all.
If we get maybe just a brief monthly report on how, where we're moving, what we've done, so we don't have to ask this every month, every week.
It could be online, but I was concerned, too, because it was supposed to be addressed in the committee meetings this weekend, those meetings were canceled. So I wanted to not wait another month before we found out where we were.
Right, and we can even give you those proposed presentations, even as part of Friday's packet, but that's, that's fine for us to give you weekly updates about the progress.
I don't know if that has to be weekly, but I would think very long this month.
Sure.
I think we need to be able to answer our constituents' questions as to what we're doing, and whether we're sticking to our timelines and what happens. Another issue I was bringing up is Graydon Avenue parking. We'll talk about that, I guess, at the Get Task Force on the Fourth. There's various issues we're working through with Stanley. Third thing is this Tanner's Creek Restaurant. Are you up to speed on what's going on with that? There've been numerous complaints about noise and how it is.
Yeah, I actually would like to talk about that, because I met with the civic leagues this weekend, and they would like that to be postponed, in an effort that they're going to actually meet with the restaurant and see if they can come up with some resolution before we have to vote on it. Are you familiar with what this is? This is the Tanner's Creek Restaurant on Collie Avenue. There's been concerns about noise disturbances, and despite the fact that our bar task force goes out and says if they're under the decibels that are authorized, neighbors are still upset. There's more than just noise concerns, and they would like to handle it first at a neighbor-to-neighbor basis, if we could do that. And my feeling is that's exactly what we would like to have happen.
Right, that's fine. They've actually sent to you a copy to me of a request to repeal their special exception, and so you're saying we're gonna wait on that.
Yeah, I talked with them on Saturday, and their neighborhood picked me.
I'm not.
And so.
I have your copy.
So I think cooler heads will bail, and we can come up with a resolution that we can all agree on.
What's the way you're done?
I have one more, and I spoke to Laurie, and that zombie, what do they call it, whether it was a zombie run or whatever that's gonna happen. There are one or two, there are citizens that have had a lot of damage last year as a result of people cutting through their yards and what have you. And I think she's talking to Laurie Crouch, she's talking to them, and we need to make the effort to ensure that people are respectful, proud of their needs. And how we do that, I'm not quite sure. I understand they've changed, maybe changed the route, but there's some really, some nice zones in the area, and last year they were saying in their yards or whatever, had to be substantial. And so maybe by next week, we could have just a minute to talk about where it's going and how we're gonna work with the neighbors to be sure they're not, they don't incur a lot of damage.
We can do that. As a matter of fact, Ann Odell's been working diligently on that. Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. If I could get somebody, I didn't have a city manager, assistant city manager for Tommy today, trying not to do the cursing this week.
I didn't either.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Stanley, Stanley has this, he sent an email.
Anyhow, so let me just ask that, somebody from recreation parks and open spaces talked with the minister at the new, what used to be Willowood Presbyterian Church. They're having difficulty because Lakewood Park, the residents that come for mostly football games on Saturday are parking in their parking lot. That's always been okay, because in the past, that church has not had a high attendance. Things have changed, and so he's had some difficulties with the sports fans and parents coming and parking in.
Teresa, we got an email over the weekend from a resident that I forwarded to Daryl, and Daryl indicated that they were going to be getting in touch with the pastor, because he's only been there for a couple of weeks, and that they were setting up a meeting with him to basically make clear what space was the city's and what, because my understanding is that the pastor had some cars towed that were actually on city property and not on their property.
The pastor didn't tow them.
Or somebody had them towed. But anyway, they're working to.
A meeting has been established.
Okay, because the minister called me this afternoon, too, and he still hadn't heard from me.
As of about, as of about thirty minutes ago, to the result.
Okay, great. All right. I talked about the flooding and the parking. There's an article in the paper about the possibility that the governor's school would be moving downtown, which I think sounds like a great idea to collaborate all that downtown, but it also talked about city involvement.
Dr. Wibley, if you go back a, I think maybe two budget cycles, or at least one, there in Stanley, there was actually about $600,000, or a course of two years, set in the budget for renovations, is that correct?
So that's where that money has come from?
Yes, that new money.
Okay. And then lastly, I think we're, most of you are aware of the legislative package that was announced several weeks ago in Virginia Beach. They have a very organized package that actually was put out to the public, and they were having open sessions for public comment on their package. They have about 12 points. I'm hoping that we can similarly get some input, I mean, you know, it's getting late in the season. I also was quite taken by several of their points, that I thought maybe we ought to be able to work together on collaboration for that. Have we made plans for that?
As a matter of fact, we started, we're a little late, but we started even discussion this week, where we have three areas, and Brian's doing a great job, about recommendations from the administration to the council about legislation that we should have carried for us, legislation that we should support, and legislation that we should oppose. So we're actually having a meeting on Friday with staff to try to get that together, so that we can have something for the council.
Did anybody else see this, or are you aware of the fact that they're meeting with the public on this, having open forums? I mean, we've never done that, I believe, have we? Have we? Do we care about that, or? Anyway, I really thought some of the issues, I think many of you know, they talked about gas tax and eminent domain. There were a number of things that I would think we ought to be able to try to work together with regionally.
We re-put gambling back on.
No.
Is that it?
Has it?
Angela?
I don't have any.
Yes, first, I know we're gonna talk about that article. I don't know why it characterizes though I'm the lead in this. It is in my ward. Barkley and I talked with Burner, because we started hearing rumors about this, about having the town hall meeting with it. And I think one thing to separate with this is that when, with the first settlement, there was something that we got out of that. The Bayside Avenue part is a separate part, and we'll talk about that later. It was characterized as though I'm friends with him, and as I explained to you guys before, I'm not friends with Ed Clark. And I don't really feel like I have to defend myself, but I want people to know that it's been business with him. I met with him just as much as I met with Burner over this, and so, you know, I hope that when we talk about this, you guys understand that this is nothing personal.
Did you contribute to your campaign?
No, we did not. No, we did not.
Sounds like you're defending yourself.
Well, I mean, it's just.
I was thinking that, I wasn't gonna say it, though.
I'm fine with it, I don't care. It doesn't smell good, Bill, but I was curious what it would sound like if you were defending yourself.
Right. He didn't like my predecessor. I do want to talk about schools real quick, and it obviously near and dear to my heart, because I work in the school system.
Excuse me.
There was a recent announcement that four of the high schools did not make state accreditation. Actually, two are provisionally, and two are accredited with warning. Please note that if you talk about this, that part of the reason why those schools are not accredited did not have to do necessarily with the academics of the school and meeting the benchmarks. It had to do with the new indicator with the on-time graduation. And Virginia just started last year with saying that each high school had to have an 85% graduation rate with a cohort. And a cohort is a group of students who start their freshman year, enrolled in a high school, and they have to graduate in four years. And one part you need to know about that is that a student who leaves the school and goes to another school might not necessarily come off that list if the parent has not disenrolled them the right way from the school. Another part of it is if a student chooses to go into a GED program, and they do complete the GED program, the school does not get a full credit for that student. They give a 75% credit, and that also includes students that are special needs that might not get a full diploma, but might get a modified diploma. And so when you look at those numbers, and you see, as the State Department has indicated that these schools are not accredited, or they could be deemed failing schools, if you look at the school systems that struggled with this, it tended to be your urban school systems. And a lot of that has to do with a transient population of not knowing where kids go. And I can tell you one thing that I deal with as an assistant principal, is the amount of bad addresses that we receive where parents don't update their information and bad phone numbers. It continuously is a problem in our schools. Right now, I'm working with a list at Granby High School of 118 bad addresses. These are returned mail, and the kids are enrolled at our school, but the parents have possibly moved either out of city or in another school district, but they still want to send their kid to that high school. And so they will not come in and change their address, and we're very limited on what we can do. And one of the things that I've asked Burner to look into is if the city of Norfolk has the same provision that Chesapeake has, which is it's a class four misdemeanor in Chesapeake if you lie to a school and do not give them the proper information. And they have taken people to court. I know, for example, there is a girl at our school that lives in Virginia Beach and is going to our school and lying about her address. She should be paying tuition if she wants to go to our school. But that is the type of student that ends up on our dropout list. And right now, one thing that Granby administration is working on is we have 86 kids in this cohort, the cohort of 2012, that are considered dropouts. That would put Granby at about a 76% promotion rate. If everybody graduated in this class, that would put us at 76% at the end of the year, which once again means that we won't meet the state accreditation. But if you look at those 86 kids, you have every assistant principal, every principal, an attendance technician, three other staff members that have gone to these houses, knocked on doors. We have tried to find these kids, and in most cases, the houses are vacant. The parents have literally picked up and moved on. They did not notify the school that they've left, and wherever they went to, their child did not enroll at that school, and they never contacted the school to get any transcripts. So that student ends up on our dropout list, and you're gonna have a higher percentage of that in an urban school district than what Virginia Beach is gonna have to deal with. And so I just want to make sure that the public and you guys understand that it's hard for schools, any school employee. We don't want to be labeled as a school with accredited with warning, but I hope that people understand and know that there's limited resources, and there's only so much that we can do. There's, it's a societal issue with kids not wanting to stay in school. The value of education is not being passed down like it used to. And so what are you supposed to do, especially when you have limited options? When I have a 17-year-old who wants to get a GED, but there's no GED program for them to go into, and they have one credit, and they've dropped out of school, we go and retrieve them, we try to get them to take classes, what do you do? And so I hope that as we continue to talk about schools, and when we meet with the school board, that you understand that aspect of it. And there's many people that take it personally. And I think that for, I know some of the principals that I've talked to about this, they are offended that anybody would say that we have a failing school system when they have been working really hard with the academic side of it, but now we're gonna be labeled as failing because of this on-time graduation.
Hey, no, Tommy, I can appreciate your dedication to the school district, because I know you are a dedicated person, but I think that the district should have worked harder to insist upon an on-time graduation rate. I got a call from a fellow who was disenchanted with an answer that he got from the school superintendent, when he asked about the disparity between the graduation rate from the African-American community and the white community, and so it blew him off, in his opinion. So I think that a lot of times, instead of, you know, crying, not necessarily you, but instead of crying about the state, you know, because of their new regulations and their regulations, and because it looks like we're not performing well, it doesn't have anything to do with you, it doesn't have anything to do with the dedicated teachers and the principals and administrators there. It just means that the school district, I believe, needs to work harder, because it's just, it's just like in, with the city of Norfolk's bond rating. Mood is always difficult on the city of Norfolk. My position is that we should say, look at what Mood is says and work towards that. And so maybe this is a way for the school district to recognize that on-time graduation is something that's very important. School has changed, you know, families have changed, the support the children get at home, all of that has changed. And so somehow, we have enough people at the universities in this community, and in our communities and around this table, to figure out what we got to do, you know, to meet those on-time graduation rates, and find out why students are dropping out. Is it that they're not interested, is it they don't have the resources, you know, they're in a number of answers? And we just have to roll our sleeves up and find out, you know, what the answers are?
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right, and one thing to consider, too, is that our school system has taken a huge hit budgetary-wise from the state in the last couple of years. And although we continue to fund with what they've asked for, there is a need for more resources. And when you have no tech, which ended up getting cut because it's not part of the standards of quality, that they cut nine, eight or nine teachers from that program, cosmetology and other programs, that kids who are not motivated to stay in school, but might be motivated because they see a trade or another skill, and they can do regular academics at the same time, when you start limiting those options, you start losing those kids. So when budget time comes along, I hope that, I always encourage, you know, the school system, they need to ask for more money and let us know what they really need, but we've got to also look at this.
That's a lot of issues.
Yeah, no, that's it. I didn't have any issues the last couple of weeks, so I saved it for this.
How did we?
The mayor wouldn't push me, by the way. He would let me finish.
Yes, he would. How did we compare to Richmond? I mean, if we're looking at apples to apples, how many, what percentage of their high schools?
I think it was almost the same. I think they had the same.
And Litchford, same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just have a few things here.
One other thing, just kidding.
I just have a few things, and one of the issues I'm gonna piggyback on as it relates to schools, I know we have the school board coming in real soon, and in my opinion, not too soon. I have visited a few of my elementary schools in my ward, and I have most of the schools in my ward. And one of the issues that I'm seeing is that, that we're supposed to be trying to close this achievement gap, and that if we're gonna ever do that, you know, we talk about it, but how serious are we? Because when I go into a school and they tell me that the computers are in the classroom, but they are not working because they haven't upgraded the, I guess IT hadn't upgraded the server to be able to, for the students to be able to utilize these computers, it's a problem. You know, especially with our early kids, in terms of the, a few of the schools I've gone to, the kids are behind already. Now, this has been a problem that they tried to adjust a year ago. You got teachers that are afraid to speak up because they don't want to get in trouble. And so I'm getting it from parents, is they would go to the parent-teacher conferences and then find out that their kids are in classrooms, that the computers are there, but they're not able to utilize them, and it's a part of the curriculum. And so, you know, I don't know if, Tommy, if that is something that we point to and say that it's a resource issue, or it's a prioritizing what's important issue. Because we cannot continue to talk about closing the achievement gap and say we're putting resources and money into early childhood, and yet, we're not taking care of what the resources we do have, we're not properly utilizing those resources to get the results that we hope to achieve. And so for me, it's very disappointing to find that out, you know, in October when we started school in September. And it's not fair to the parents, and it's not fair to the citizen taxpayers of the city. And so if there are issues that need to be on the table, I would hope that the school district can put them on the table and give us some explanations as to why these things are not happening. Why do you have computers sitting up in classrooms and they're not being able to, they're not being utilized? So that's an issue. And if it's an IT issue, then we need to correct that. But it doesn't make any sense. So that's one of the issues I wanted to speak to. And I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to, well, last week, there was, well, week before last, we had some discussion, and, you know, Mr. Winn, he didn't recall us having a meeting on that particular issue, so not to get into it or go into it anymore.
Which issue?
The, this was the, yeah, the delinquent tax issue. Not gonna.
I recall.
No, well, what I did.
Two years ago, haven't it?
No, no, well, I did this to, for your own personal identification, and you could view this, put it on the nightstand at night, but here is the actual presentation that we received on July the 20th, 2010, by Ron Williams, when the city administration was in transition. So the only one that wasn't on this council at that point was Angela Williams, and so she wouldn't have had a copy of this presentation. And if you go to the page before the last page, then you would see that this has been on the table for quite some time, but not labeled that issue. But I did want you to have it, because I think it's important, if we have a presentation, that we'd be able to go back and, and you said you couldn't recollect that, so I wanted to make sure that you did have that information.
I didn't, I'm sorry for misunderstanding, I'm just representing that I had been told that the Commissioner of Revenue, which was not aware of it, that's why they usually have somebody here, so.
I don't like hearing or reading that I somehow tricked the council into voting for something. I know I can't trick Mr. Riddick into doing anything, you know.
I didn't say.
No, no, you didn't say that, but that was a statement that came out that accused me and Mr. Pishko of doing just that. And, you know, I just wanted to set the record straight, and you can have that document. And like I said, there's eight people to sit around this table on any given Tuesday, and you form your own opinions based on information that you have. And I don't call anyone to try to influence their decisions on anything. And so with that being said, you have that information, and again, I hope you would review it, because you issued it out, because we've passed that, but I did want you to have it. Mr. Manager, that's all I had at this time of, and that, because we are running short on time, I will allow you to move forward and give the presentation.
We have, I believe, about two items.
So we just be sure to have enough time for 10 minutes, executive, pause a session a bit.
If we get there.
Not now, I'll be back later, but I don't want to be, I wore, we have a meeting tomorrow night, of course, everybody needs to understand.
And Councilman, I think that if we're able to go through three items, that I do not believe are gonna take a long period of time. We could then go into the closed session, if that's the will of the council. One is that we just have an item that will be voted on on the 25th, that Frank's gonna give a presentation on, and then we have an item tonight that we committed to having a presentation before that item, as well as we have SIPSA here. And I believe that we can do that well within the time to allow for a closed session. Frank?
The item that I wanted to brief you on is, as Mr. Jones indicated, a land use item that'll be coming before you to set a public hearing on in two weeks, and this is a proposed plan amendment rezoning and a text amendment for a development of 3,500, 350 Campastella Road, just south of Campastella Bridge. It is in the Campastella Heights neighborhood, it's a little over 17 acres of vacant land that has been turned commercial in the most recent past. This plan does require a plan amendment, or this project does require a plan amendment, because the general plan currently designates the site as medium-density residential, and what is being proposed would be high-density residential. Now, the strategic plan for South Side, which is the most current plan covering this area, calls for this property to be multifamily, which is what is being proposed. And that plan called for a recreational path along the waterfront, and one of the issues that the African has committed to doing through the rezoning is the provision of a recreational path. The actual proposal is for a 5,000-square-foot Uh, the actual proposal is for a 5,000 square foot commercial building to be located on the property. This was done at the request of the Campastella Heights, uh, neighborhood. The project itself is 246 apartment units. Uh, they are providing parking, that a, uh, proposing parking at 1.7 spaces per dwelling unit. That is lower than what we would typically require, but it is very consistent with the IT standards, uh, that we're moving to. We just haven't gotten to that point yet in the ordinance. And I would note that we have, on a number of cases in the past, approved a, a text amendment that would provide parking consistent with these standards. The other thing that they are proposing is to have 5% compact spaces. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not recognize compact spaces. Uh, but this is another issue that we've talked about during with the parking, uh, changes we're bringing forward. And this recommendation is consistent with the recommendation of the National Parking Association. Um, the other issues with regard to the text amendment is they're committing to 20% open space exclusive of wetlands, uh, with amenities that would include a clubhouse, a boat dock and that five-foot wide trail, recreational riverfront, uh, riverfront trail. They have also committed that that trail will be made of a pervious material, uh, for the environmental benefits it provides. And they'll, they will also have a pool, playground or outdoor plaza. And they have committed to the architectural details of the project, uh, and the materials that were requested by the Campastella Heights neighborhood. And they've committed that the project will go through the city's design review process. And this gives you the conceptual site plan of the project. Um, what you have here is that recreational trail wrapping all the way around the project so that you'd be able to pick it up on Campastella Road and actually walk entirely around, around the project, which was one of the things that the South Side plan called for. Uh, it does include that a, there'll be a gated area at the entrance, which is another issue that Campastella Heights wanted. You'll have the appearance of a gated area. This is the courtyard that is committed to, the clubhouse. Um, so this does completely comport with the text amendment that has been requested and it was endorsed by the, uh, Campastella Heights neighborhood. Here you have the elevations, uh, that have been submitted. I should also note that this is the first project in the city of Norfolk that has had to go through the state's 527 review. This is a review mandated by state law for projects that will trip certain transportation thresholds. Uh, it was required for this project both because of its size and its proximity to the interstate exits. VDOT did the review. It took them several months to go through the review. At the end of the day, VDOT determined to no significant impact. And I should note that I am required to acknowledge that to you before you can have the public hearing, uh, on this so that it is a part of your record. Uh, the Campastella Heights Civic League, after a number of meetings between the applicant and the Civic League, did provide us with a letter of support, uh, based on the commitments made to the design by the applicants through this process as well as the commitment to provide that riverfront walkway. The staff recommendation is also approval. It's based on consistency with the required plans as well as the support from the community. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval to you on a four to one vote, which is why I'm giving you the presentation. Uh, the majority believed that, uh, the community's support was the persuading factor for them and because of the applicant's efforts to meet with the community and finally getting that community support, they recommended approval to you. Uh, the one person who voted in the minority objected because he felt the density was still too high.
You know, a lot of times when it comes back and they say, well, the support of the Civic League, you have, uh, I don't know how many residents over in Campastella Heights and you could have a, a Civic League meeting of 20 people there. Those 20 people can agree to support something, but they don't have the, you know, the, the total impact of the community is not represented. A couple of things that concern me. Frank, based on your experience, uh, what kind of impact would this have on a community like Campastella Heights? You know, home values are down, uh, nationwide. Uh, you have a, a, a community which is, at one time was a very strong and stable middle class community. Uh, what kind of impact would this have? And, and, and right next to that, you have, uh, a commercial area.
Yes, sir.
You know, uh, where you, you know, which, that is, uh, an impact. So what kind of impact, in your opinion, if you care to share, would this have on a community like that?
Well, with the commitments that have been made to the materials, uh, as well as the architectural design, I think this could have a positive impact on property values because it encourages new investment in the area. Um, I will agree with you, Mr. Riddick. I was looking at property values in the Campastella Heights neighborhood and they have declined more significantly in this neighborhood over the past four years than they have in the city as a whole. Um, so yes, this is an area that we do need to be very careful with what we do. We need to be very sensitive so that we can take steps to enhance property values in this area.
And the only, when, when, when the traffic flow, is it only at the light that the traffic will be able to exit the property and enter the property?
There's no other way that you could get an exit except for this point right here, uh, which is at a signalized intersection because the, uh, ramp coming up for the bridge is going up at this point. So there's just no other way to get another access point there. If I had a way that we could have gotten another access point, I would have preferred it because given the number of units, I, I think it's, it's always better to have more than one access point. But given the location of this property and its proximity to the bridge, that just isn't possible.
Now, that, uh, anybody exiting that property, I guess it would be some type of buffer to keep them from going across that commercial property and maybe coming out on Arlington?
Yes, sir. There's no way you'd be able to do this because of the landscape buffer that they're, they'll be required to install. That was another concern that we had, uh, as we looked at this, because if you didn't have the landscape buffer, yeah, people might cut through there and dump more traffic onto the, the neighborhood streets, which would be a problem. The design precludes that from happening.
And are these units, are they one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms? What's the breakdown?
I believe it would be a mix. I don't have that exact number.
Right. And, and, and when they say 1.7, as far as the population is concerned, you're going to have at least 600 cars there, in my opinion, at any given time. There's no such thing as, and I'm sure you have grass that you, you, but there's no such thing as seven tenths of a car. And, um, and, and I just, I just, the reason I'm going to be, uh, voting against this when it does come is because of the, uh, impact of the neighborhood, which at this point I believe is fragile. And also the traffic flow. Getting, uh, five or 600 cars out there on any given time, uh, I think that's going to be an impact. We had a wonderful discussion, uh, on apartments and their impact on a community. We voted on some, uh, apartments back on the other side of, uh, Rabbit Road, uh, not long ago. And, um, so I don't know, I, I just, you know, although this is something that's been very popular in other communities, I think we, uh, have to look at it a little closer and have to scrutinize a little bit more. And, uh, and who are the developers? You probably don't. We, we, that'll all come to us sooner or later.
I don't know if I count that list.
Can you, can you cross?
I honestly don't recall right off the top of my head.
What, Mr. Riddick, I, what? I've read about it two, three times a day. What would you like to see there? I'm trying to, trying to envision, you've got a, you know, a giant open air that's been torn down and people escape, wouldn't, park in and do whatever over there.
Yeah, I, I think that...
What would you envision?
Uh, well, housing would be good, but 246 units and not knowing whether to break down or there's two bedrooms, three bedrooms and, you know, you, you could be looking at, uh, maybe a thousand people over there. And that's just, that's just a very small space.
I think we need to get that information. And I haven't been contacted by anybody about it. I've just wondered in my own mind, Mr. Jones, Ward, been sitting there a long time. I thought there were some, some environmental issues that precluded doing.
I met with the Civic League and originally they had a lot of issues. And a developer called me and I told him point blank, if you can't get the Civic League on board with it, I can't support it. And they went, in my opinion, above and beyond in, in terms of, um, dealing with the Civic League, their conversations back and forth with them. Um, it's the same builder slash developer that's doing the townhouses over by Old Dominion. They took a bus load full of people at their own...
Is that on 43rd Street?
Yes. The, the new, the row townhouses.
43rd Street.
Okay. Um, they took a bus at their own expense over of, of citizens, um, who wanted to go over there and toured the facility so that they could see the quality of the construction, the quality of the work that they, you know, that they do and the quality of the product that they put out. Um, they've changed some, I mean, they've gone through a lot of expense to pretty much give the community, um, in Campastella Heights what they've asked for. My understanding is that they have something from the South Side Coalition as well.
That's not a...
The only letter that I have received is, on this project from the neighborhood is from the Civic League.
Okay. But, but at any rate, they, they have worked diligently with the Campastella Heights community in order to make the project what, something that is going to be complementary to the area and give a variety of housing options over there. Um, right now, there's, in my opinion, there's not great rental options over there for people who can't, you know, for people who can't buy. And so to give a, a, a good option and, and give a good mixture of housing. But they've done, they've gone, in my opinion, above and beyond, uh, to, to make sure that they are working with the community and they've also committed to hiring people from the community, um, in that very community throughout that project.
You know, one thing is, as far as the ODU area, that, that, that might show the quantity, but in this particular instance, I think what concerns me is the quantity, you know? It's just, it's just, it's just so many of those units. And now, now Frank, in, in a, in a situation like that, sometimes, let's say for instance, when the city committed to Nordstrom, they had to fly that flag for maybe 20 years before they could change. When a del, developer comes in and builds something, uh, he can sell that development anytime he gets ready, I guess, because it's his property. And then somebody else could come in with less of a commitment, you know, to the community. And it's, some, sometimes things look good, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine years, but after 10 years, there's no telling, you know, what it's going to look like.
Well, the, the protection we do, the only protection that we can provide through zoning is, is through proffers that are attached to the zoning. And so the conditions that are attached do deal with the materials, the architectural details. They address the color. Um, they, they do require the commercial. They require this path, that path would be made of a pervious material. So we have, we have got a number of commitments and that is the only protection we can provide. And then beyond that, it simply becomes the city's responsibility, my department's responsibility to ensure that, that all the city codes with regard to maintenance are...
And Mr. Riddick, the argument should be made as well with somebody buying a home.
Right.
They buy a brand new house and in 10 years, if they don't take care of it, it looks like a piece of crap.
Frank, what's the investment that's being made there?
I, I don't get that information.
What type of what?
The investment. Is it 20 million, 30 million?
I believe it's 30, 35 million, if I'm not mistaken. It's at least $30 million. I want to say 35, but I'm not 100% sure.
What are the rents, Frank? How do they?
I don't have any information about rents because that's not an issue that we deal with through zoning.
800 to 1600.
Frank, is this in a flooding area? Is this area flooded?
Um, this area, you're going to have flooding around the perimeter of this area, which is why you've got these setbacks.
Yeah.
That are called for, but this, this would meet all of the city's, uh, flood ordinance requirements.
Is it a senior community or is it?
It is not committed to be a senior community.
Well, and I know that you always send out letters to presidents. And so I guess the only thing we can do is hope that people who might have, um, opposition to it will come down.
We heard many people raising objections initially, including the Civic League. And I will be honest, I told the developer, a week before this was going to planning commission for public hearing, my recommendation to him was to withdraw because I told him that without the Civic League's support, you don't have a prayer at planning commission because planning commission was very concerned about the, the neighborhood position on this. And the morning of the planning commission public hearing is when I received the letter from the Civic League indicating that they had met with the developer and they were supportive of it if the developer would make commitments with regard to the design, the materials, the colors, uh, to creating the appearance of the gate. And the, the applicant made all of those proffers at the planning commission public hearing.
And I sat in on two meetings, uh, with the Civic League and the developer. And, you know, like I said, they've gone above and beyond, um, in terms of being accommodating to the neighborhood and to the Civic League and what they have asked for, to make every effort to, you know, make the community one that will be attractive and complementary to, uh, the South Side and draw in, um, draw in new, new folks. So I think it's a good development. I think it's going to bring some life into the area.
The green space I saw was 20%. Is that correct?
Yeah, exclusively well and just.
And what, what's our, um, minimum?
Um, we do not have a minimum. What our typical is, is 35%, which is significantly higher than, uh, than what anyone else in the area is when we brought in the analysis of open space. So we had recommended that that be revised because right now, the only thing we count is opens, is, is usable open space. So a lot of the areas that are shown as green would not get any credit here. Um, but then other areas that you wouldn't think of necessarily as open space would get credit. For example, this buffer area, they would get credit as open space under our current ordinance.
So what are you telling me? You're telling me that you think 20% is adequate?
I think 20% is adequate if it is 20% usable open space. And that's why the conservative, to be able to get some opportunities for activity, the pool, the playground, uh, the boat dock, that trail, in order to create some opportunities for people to move and to have activity instead of just to have a, a empty yard.
My concern is less the open space, the idea that it's open space and more the impact on the bay and the river. And, uh, if you've got all that impervious space, you're having a hard time filtering, uh, rain and stormwater.
And this will have to still go through. They, they have not been able, or they have not had to deal with their stormwater issues. Uh, but they're going to have to deal with that as part of their actual site plan. This is purely a conceptual site plan that they are tied to. Um, but that is why you do see the more extensive buffer along the river would be, and also why that trail is pervious, uh, would be to try to deal with some of those stormwater issues.
You know, this, the, the developers have a couple of friends being that's been out spraying peanut butter for this project. And I have avoided, you know, meetings with them guys that I know. And I, I've just avoided because I can't, I'm just not going out like that. I can't be bought, you know? I just can't be bought like that.
Marcus, can we keep a track of how many apartment complexes we've approved in the last couple of years and what the status of those apartments are? I'm just curious because I mean, this is probably the, is this the ninth one since I've been on council? Eighth?
Right, because you saw the recent article about how high the occupancy is and how the need...
Right. Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that. I just would like to know if we're keeping track of this and, I mean, um, and how many of them have actually gone underway? We've approved them. And then do they end up actually starting the project when there's, when they say they're going to start?
We can give you a statement.
Especially if we give them special zoning and if they don't, I think, I've always believed that if a project doesn't start in a certain amount of time, we need to go back and pull zoning from them.
Yeah, but not starting on time can be a whole lot of issues. Not just them, it could be financing, it could be, exactly. It could be a whole lot of issues on a project that starts on time.
I don't have a problem with that, but we do give special zoning for some of these projects. And if they can't get it started in two years, then it must've just been a gleam in somebody's eye to start off with and it needs to be pulled back and we need to take the zoning back before a slum developer comes in and wants to put something else on there with the new zoning.
Yeah, I think it's a good point because God, I don't want to get we fight over that Roland Park thing because nothing's happened there.
But that's going to happen. I think the financing just broke through. I think HUD had it all blocked up and it's just been coming out.
There are so many different changes to financing on any given day for any given project.
I don't think that any of the ones we approved were with developers that would quickly as they get their financing, not move ahead.
And with regards to Mr. Wynn's point, I have heard from one of the developers who got a project, that HUD told them they had begun the review. Two weeks after, according to the HUD regulations, they should have given them an answer on the financing. So the HUD process has gotten really slow over the past year.
It's, it's, on any given day, there could be...
They spent a lot, awful lot of money getting to this point.
And then it's not over.
I didn't say funds, but some of these projects sit for years and they don't...
Is there more?
No, sir, this is it.
Well, I, I go back to, I would... Well, I, I go back to, I would really, you know, I was against the Roman Park issue because of the impact it had on our river, and I'm very concerned about this. And when we're talking about, well, we usually ask for 35% green space, but we're going to take 20%, it seems like we're going the wrong direction.
And the, the one kind of.
I would really like to have somebody come speak to us that has a, has a role with the health of the rivers and bays, to speak to us, to tell us, you know, this project is going to be fine, this meets the things that we're concerned about. It just, I, I want to make sure that we, as a city, are not approving projects that are working against all the work we're trying to do for the bay.
Well, this particular project would have, have to go through, I mean, well, the Army Corps of Engineers would have to vet this one, I believe.
Only if it would depend on if they are, are having impacts on, on protected.
Well, well, this is pretty close to the APR buffer. I mean, they're working within the 100 feet and the 50 feet buffer. So, this, this go through our.
It will go through, my environmental services staff review every one of these to ensure that it is not going to create any adverse environmental impact. That's done before we ever take it to Planning Commission.
Right, so if they're working, I mean, I, when I did the project on the West Side River, it had to go through the Army Corps of Engineers. And so, there was nothing to take, that's wetlands area right out there, too.
There is a well in there, this could require that review, I just don't know.
Their outflow and what have you, they would have, that will have to be, I'm pretty sure that would have to be vetted by the Army Corps of Engineers. So, to answer your question, Teresa, I mean, they're, they have, they would come in and along with Frank's folk, and work with them and let them know what they can and cannot do, and, and make sure that they're protecting the bay.
But some of our, our, you know, regulations are not consistent with those that people, you know, feel is going to be healthy for the bay in the long term. You know, we lag the, the US regulations in some ways, lag behind recommendations to save the bay. And I just, I would just like to have another.
Not to mention, there's a whole bunch of other uses for that zoning type that could go there that would be horrible for that neighborhood. And they wouldn't have to come before us to ask us for zoning, because they would be totally within their right in terms of what the site is zoned for.
You're zoned for commercial, right?
Yes.
The other part of, the other part of that equation, you look across the.
That whole other thing for commercial.
You look, you look across the, the river, and you've got tarmac.
Yep.
And so, I mean, if you're talking about some environmental issues and what it's doing to the bay, go over there to the shipyard, what is that doing to the bay? You know, and.
Even right now, the property is paved, it's just a whole giant open area that would've been knocked down, and they're getting more runoff there now, I can guarantee right into the river than they would.
I'm totally aware of all that.
I mean, I think this property is unique.
I'm just saying, that if you're going to do something, do it well the first time. So, 10 years later, you're not saying, oh, it wasn't so great for the bay. I, I know that what is there now is not great. I welcome improvement. But you know, they could do structured parking.
The last time this, this property was.
More open space.
Was an asset to that community, was when it was the giant, I mean, yeah, the old giant open air market. And from there, it was a flea market.
Yep.
You know, and so, I, I can't, I can't recall the many years that something has, finally getting something that, that makes sense or something that, where people are not coming in and want to use new, I mean, low-income housing tax credits to build something on the South Side. I mean, they're actually using their money, you know, an investment, that's a market rate and investment, and then the types of rents that they're putting in. So, I mean, at the end of the day, you would want this type of development. I can't speak for Mr. Riddick, because he, that's his word.
Well, it's just too many, you know, to me, I think, you know, in my opinion, when you look at the apartments, when you look at what we did off of Rabbit Road and some of the other things that are coming down the pipe, I just believe it's just too many units, too much of a concentration of automobiles, and then, and the impact it's going to have on the home values in Camp Estella Heights. Those are the issues that concern me. So, could it just come, you voted on it, or is it something, they're paying financing through, we just had.
I'd like to, you know, do the best, trying to make sure that it can be, no, I know, I know it can be better, it just, we might as well do the best. Good evening.
Good evening.
Norfolk has long been and continues to be a leader in the area of water supply plan, and we are very fortunate in the enviable position of having adequate water supplies to meet our projected needs for the next 30 to 50 years and beyond. As a regional water purveyor, Norfolk participated in the development of a regional water supply plan, and that was in addition to preparing our own individual water supply plan. This regional water supply plan that was developed through Hampton Roads Planning District Commission is fully consistent with the local plan and is scheduled for public hearing tonight and adoption of a resolution to authorize submitting the plan to DEQ. The state's water supply planning regulations went into effect in 2005 in response to the drought that occurred in 2001 and 2002. And those regulations require every locality in Virginia to submit a water supply plan to the Department of Environmental Quality. If a locality does an individual plan, the deadline for submission was in 2008. If the locality participated in a regional water supply plan, which was encouraged by the Department of Environmental Quality, the deadline is November 2nd of this year. The regulations require that, prior to submission of the plan, the locality hold a public hearing on the plan and adopt a resolution endorsing its submission. So, water supply plans are required to contain three particular components. The first component is a description of the existing water sources and the amount of water that's available, how it's used, and the natural resources associated with it. The second component is a projection of what the water supply needs are going to be in the next 30 to 50 years. And that component needs to address water conservation plans and drought plans. And then the third component is basically a comparison of the first two. And if the existing water resources are not adequate to meet the future needs, you have to include in the plan a list of alternatives to meet the deficit. Norfolk's forefathers did a great job planning for our water supply needs. We're currently the second water, largest water purveyor in the state. Fairfax County Water Authority is first, and Newport News Water Works is third. We have a very strong water system due to the fact that we have multiple water sources that vary both in type and geographical location. And the fact that our system's watershed spans 2,500 square miles over eight cities and counties makes us particularly resistant to drought, because it could be raining in one part of our watershed and having a drought in another part. This map shows in the shaded areas our watershed, and what it illustrates is that when you turn on the tap in Norfolk, you could be drinking water that fell as rainfall as far north as Petersburg or as far west as Prince Edward County. Our water sources are not only geographically diverse, but they're diverse in type. We have eight reservoirs, three in Suffolk and in Isle of Wight County, and then five in town or in Norfolk and Virginia Beach. The largest ones are out west in Suffolk and Isle of Wight County. We have pump stations on two rivers, the Blackwater River in Isle of Wight County and the Nottaway River in Southampton County. We have four deep wells located, three in Suffolk and one in Isle of Wight, and those pump into our western reservoirs. And then Virginia Beach pumps their Lake Gaston water into our western reservoirs. This map shows the raw or untreated water delivery system. The green line to the left is the Lake Gaston pipeline that discharges into our western reservoirs, and right below that, you can see the red pipeline that delivers water from our two river pump stations, and it discharges at the same location that the Lake Gaston water discharges. And then, we have the four wells that are located by the green dots right around the reservoirs. And from there, there are four pipelines that run in two parallel pairs. One set of pipelines go to our 37th Street Water Treatment Plant, which serves the western part of the city, and the other pipelines serve or flow to our Morse Bridges Water Treatment Plant, which serves the eastern part of the city and treats the water for the city of Virginia Beach. In addition to having diverse water sources, we have diverse customers. And Norfolk residents and businesses use about 17 million gallons per day of water on average. The Navy facilities in Norfolk of Virginia Beach are supplied by the city of Norfolk with about 4 million gallons per day of treated water. We have a contract to provide the city of Chesapeake with 7 million gallons per day of raw or untreated water, and that can be increased to 10 million gallons per day if both cities would like to do that. And we also provide them with 3 million gallons per day of treated water. We have a contract with the Western Tidewater Water Authority, which consists of Suffolk and Isle of Wight County. And that contract has us providing 3 million gallons per day of untreated water, and the, that amount increases gradually to 15 million gallons per day in 2038, and the contract extends to 2048. In times of drought, we have provided the city of Portsmouth and the city of Virginia Beach with water, 10 million gallons per day each. And of course, we treat Virginia Beach's Lake Gaston water, and they use on an annual average about 30 mil, 34 million gallons per day, and obviously, that's higher in the summer during the tourist season. The city of Norfolk's already complied with the state water supply planning regulations by submitting our local or individual plan in 2008. That plan showed that we have adequate water to meet our future needs. But as a regional water purveyor, we also participated in the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission's compilation of a regional plan. And that regional plan is fully consistent with our local plan and will be submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality once all HRPDC's member localities have held public hearings and passed resolutions endorsing the plan's submission. The regional water supply plan shows that the region's water supply is adequate to meet our 30 to 50-year needs, but it also indicates that there's the potential for a deficit on the peninsula, and it shows a projected surplus on the South Side through 2050. In conclusion, Norfolk's water supply is plentiful and more than adequate to meet our future needs. The regions, the regional water supply plan is fully consistent with Norfolk's individual plan, and staff recommends that council hold the public hearing tonight and adopt the resolution approving the plan for submission to DEQ, and that will be further demonstration of Norfolk's excellent stewardship of water resources that serve the region. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Yes, sir.
Have, the contract that we have with Virginia Beach to treat Gaston water and deliver to them, when we initially signed that contract, how many years was it?
I don't know the initial contract. Right now, it expires in 2030.
Okay. So, and so whatever price that we are paying, that they are paying us, won't have a chance to change it to 2030 or where increase is built in in the initial contract?
Well, it is a cost-of-service contract, and every two years, it's calculated out what the new rate's going to be. And at the end of that two-year period, there's a true-up that compares what our actual costs were towards the, to the projections, and then how much they pay us is adjusted.
Now, Newport News did not get a favorable court decision on the King William compound. Are they in line to buy water from us, or do they have enough water already?
They have enough water right now to meet their needs. There's some concern that in the future, they may not. They haven't discussed yet purchasing water from us, but they're seeing a trend that we're seeing as well, and it's a national trend, that per capita water consumption is going down. And I think that's part of what happened to the King William Reservoir Project in addition to a number of other things.
Thank you.
Seems like we're talking about a number of things that have a regional flavor to them, and if we can go into the HRPDC, we just talked about the water supply, Dr. Willy brought up about the, the bay, and just to let you know, we, there is a TMDL group that works at James, I'm sorry, James City County all the way down through the South Side, and they are working with EPA, talking about what are the types of programs that can be put into place that can have an impact on the bay, and Elizabeth River Group and other environmental groups are a part of that working session. And we will bring something forward to you in the future. What we're here today is, we have a really significant issue for Norfolk that is coming forward to fruition in 2018, and that is the end of the current user agreements that operate SIPS under. The CAOs of the, of the member localities engaged SCS engineering represented here today by Bob Gardner, who is a senior vice president with them. And they have put together a lot of analysis. We want to be data-driven in this, and this is part of an ongoing process, and we wanted to make you aware of it with today's presentation, about what it is we're doing to gather the information and, and be able to then engage you and engage others in what may be a very significant decision on what we do with our waste disposal post-2018 when SIPS expires. Bob, please.
Good evening. I was just looking at this, and we, we had one that said Norfolk, but I don't know how this is Chesapeake, I just came from Chesapeake, so maybe that's, that's why that happened. I said, interestingly, at the beginning of this, and I, I heard about the school systems, I'm, I'm a black product of the city Norfolk school systems, I went up to Crossroads Elementary, Zale Gardens Junior High, Norby High School, so it worked out okay. We've spent the last couple of years dealing with the issue of what happens after 2018. In the context of that, let's think about where we were in 2008 when we finished up our interim draft report, or final report at that juncture. SIPS was in a crisis financially and organizationally. There was very little trust at that juncture in terms of the way things were being managed. At that, that point, the CAOs got together and caucused and figured a way to help SIPS out of that situation, ultimately culminated in the sale of a waste energy facility that Wheeler-Better. At the time when we did our report, the CAO said, let's put it on hold. We have a lot of other fish to fry here. Let's revisit it after we stabilize things. And that happened in, last year, in 2010, when the Wheeler-Better facility was taken over, I mean, the facility was taken over by Wheeler-Better. And then we were then tasked again to revisit the findings of our analysis. What has changed? How does that change our recommendations to the future? See if I do this thing right. So, we were, we were tasked with revisiting the findings of our, our analysis. So, what I'd like to talk briefly today about is the scope of what we did, how that differs from the last go-around, provide you a, an overview of the overall findings of our study, and discuss the implementation schedule and associated with that, some of the recommendations and recommendations associated with the presentation. One of the first things we did with regards to this project was, again, to meet with the communities. We did that three years ago. We sat down with each individual community, the CAOs, the staff, in order to understand what are the concerns that you might have. We sat with your staff. Three years ago, there was some very strong emotions, very strong feelings with regards to how things were being managed. I, I'll say this, things have changed. And I know it's very difficult to change perception, and, but I think there has been significant changes, at least from where I sit and look at the way things are being operated, that is significant. And the sense of, of that, I can't, that came through in our discussions with the member communities. As you can imagine, since 2008, there's been a few things that have happened in the economy. We've had a downturn in the economy. What has that done with regards to our waste flows? Significantly reduced those, some 25 to 30% in some cases. So, we updated those waste flows, took a look at what we did then, updated to where we are now, and then used those to project forward based upon democratic, demographic information. We also reevaluated the institutional alternatives. In, in other words, if you were to go forward with SIPS, how would you govern yourself? How would you organize yourself? How would you, the board structure be? Would it be one-for-one? Would it be, as it is structured now, two for each regional community? Or would it be proportional kinds of representation? Those are issues that ultimately still have to be tackled. We provide some data and some ideas for you to consider in that regard. We also reevaluated various scenarios with regards to disposal, transfer. We also reevaluated various scenarios with regards to disposal, transfer, how you deal with your Waste Energy Facility, how you deal with yard waste, and a few other options with regards to how you manage solid waste. We also looked at the scenarios from a different perspective. It always comes down, doesn't it, to what does it mean to me? And what does it mean to the city of Norfolk in specific? And so we developed our scenarios to provide input that goes directly into your budgets from whether it's a SIPSA organization or whether you take on those tasks yourself and contract out for disposal and transfer. We built those directly into your overall budgets, and I'll show you what that means and how we did that. We prepared a new pro forma model, and we tried to model all the moving parts, and there are lots of moving parts. You have landfills, you have Waste Energy, you have transfer, you have who's going to operate the facilities and where those monies go. If it's a SIPSA operation, how the monies go for operating and how that gets transferred to the cities. If the cities were to take over the transfer stations, how that money ultimately funnels down into your individual budgets. So we developed a pro forma that allows you to look into the budgets from that perspective. We also developed conclusions and recommendations for you to consider. We've prepared a report. It's about two-hundred-plus pages. It has been posted up on the HRPDC website as of today, so if you're interested, you can read it this evening. The basis for our scenarios, again, it came from the perspective of the individual communities and as a regional perspective. And so we looked at that from both a status quo perspective and also alternative configurations with regards to cooperation. So for example, you might have an eastern and western option, where you have the three western communities cooperate. Geographically, it makes sense. The eastern communities that are all focused in the same geographic area might have a different cooperational agreement. There are also some special considerations that we had to take into account. The city of Portsmouth, for example, it's located right near the Wheel O'Bitter facility. It doesn't have its own transfer station. So in terms of what the city of Portsmouth does might be different than some of the other communities. City of Virginia Beach, just like in the eighties when the use and support agreements were put together, the city of Virginia Beach had a landfill. That provided them a governor, so to speak, with regards to the cost, a cap on the cost that they were willing to pay because they knew what their cost structure would be. And you'll see how important the regional landfill is today in that perspective, and I'll discuss that in a moment. Also, SIPSA is required to pay a certain proportion of the city of Virginia Beach's closure costs. That can amount at this juncture, estimate about two-and-a-half million dollars a year for the next six years. So that's a special consideration that's in the budget at this point. The issue of Suffolk and the host fee, as you know, Suffolk has paid zero since the nineteen eighties when the use and support agreements were entered into. That expires in 2018. And what you do with regards to a host fee for Suffolk is still an issue to be discussed, but it's included in our analysis. How you handle commercial waste is also a question mark. You can handle it as it is now, which is through the transfer stations. You can handle your own municipally-collected waste through the transfer stations and let the commercials develop their own means for transfer and disposal, and we consider those options in our analysis, too. The integrated solid waste management hierarchy, I don't know if anybody here has reviewed the regional solid waste management plan, but there is a hierarchy in terms of, and I'll show it in a moment, of decisions with regards to what is a preferred option from a solid waste perspective, whether you go from reduction of waste through recycling to resource recovery, incineration, and landfill disposal. There's a hierarchy of decisions that could play into the overall evaluation of the alternatives. And lastly, with regards to market assumptions, what we've done is a pro forma analysis. And as you know, any pro forma analysis is as good as the assumptions that you use to build into it, and we've made assumptions with regards to what market conditions might be in 2018. I personally, if I can know what I'm going to be doing in a week, I'm happy. Thinking out 2018 and projecting what somebody might charge for a tip fee, we've made assumptions, but it can be difficult to do. Here's the waste management hierarchy that we talk about. This is in your regional solid waste management plan that you've adopted. Again, disposal being on the low end of the totem pole, the last option that you want to consider. And so as you look at the overall costs here, you'll see that that is actually the least expensive of the bunch as well. So where can you dispose of waste in 2018 when you finish with SIPSA? Well, you can continue with Wheel O'Bitter through the Waste Energy Contract. You can do that through SIPSA, or you can do that individually and negotiate a separate contract with them. You could dispose of it in the regional landfill, again, through SIPSA. You could dispose out of outer-region landfill, maybe the Virginia Beach landfill if they wanted to contract out. I doubt that's going to happen, but you know, that's a possibility. Virginia Beach could dispose of their own landfill. There are other private CNDD landfills, other organics treatment facilities. You could build a new Waste Energy Facility in the city of Virginia Beach, for example. They've got the amount of waste to potentially do that. So that was considered in our overall analyses. You can look at the various landfill scenarios in terms of who owns and operates that facility. Is it a SIPSA-operated facility? Do you somehow lease that facility? Do you sell that facility? And we'll talk about the significance of that in a second. You could sell it to one of the member communities. Suffolk, for example, Norfolk could buy it. There's a number of different options that you could consider. One of the conclusions that I'll talk about in terms of, in 2008 when we presented our analysis, we looked at the possibility and the need of constructing and siding a new regional landfill. As the economy has shifted, as the amount of waste that has been taken to the landfill has gone down significantly, the need for a new regional landfill has been reduced substantially. And we feel that in terms of, if you're going to expand, it's sure a lot easier to expand the regional landfill that you have now than to try to go inside a new regional landfill. The cooperative scenarios that we looked at in our analysis, western communities owning and operating their transfer stations and then transshipping their waste to the Waverly Facility, the Waste Management Facility in Waverly. You could have the eastern communities staying with SIPSA, and they could either self-perform that work or do it through SIPSA with or without the Waste Energy Facility. You could continue as you are now in terms of the way SIPSA is currently structured, in terms of all the member communities being involved in the overall process. Or SIPSA could be a landfill and transfer operation, which is they are now, or it could be a transfer-only operation, close the landfill, or it could be a landfill-only operation, and our analysis considers those scenarios as well. On the transfer station, I've heard it said by several member communities, well, we sure would like to operate our own transfer stations. That's considered in our analysis, and that could be a potential. You'd have to buy those transfer stations, there are SIPSA's at this juncture. So we've looked at the issue of whether the city owns and operates them or whether SIPSA owns and operates them. You could privatize those. And I'll say this, in terms of he or she who controls the waste controls what they're going to pay. And so if you control the transfer stations, you have a lot more control of what your destiny might look like. We prepared an analysis of a whole series of scenarios, and the report goes into fair detail about these, and I'll try to just break them up into their big-picture perspectives. The scenario A's, which are basically the current configuration as it is now with a couple of permutations. The A1 scenario is the status quo, which is we, just after 2018, you do exactly what you're doing today. A2 and A3 are little subsets of that, where you have the eastern communities and the western communities doing different things. And then the third one is if the municipalities take over the transfer stations and SIPSA just provides landfill disposal capacity. The B scenario is if you say, "Well, we just don't want to be involved with SIPSA anymore." Then you have two options at that juncture, either go to Wheel O'Bitter or take it to an outer-region landfill. And so the B scenarios look at shipping it out to an outer-region landfill. The C scenario is say, "Well, we've got the regional landfill. Well, let's use it, and let's not go to Wheel O'Bitter. Let's just landfill everything like we did in the past." And so it takes a look at what that cost structure might look like. The D scenarios is basically everybody on their own. You just negotiate directly with Wheel O'Bitter. You own and operate the transfer stations, and you just kind of go on and deal with it from that perspective. The E scenarios is a little out-of-the-box thinking, where you're looking at the city of Virginia Beach either constructing a Waste Energy Facility for its own municipal waste or to build a bigger facility like you have now over across the water with regards to handling the regional members' waste. And then Wheel O'Bitter will have to use that as an merchant facility and bringing waste from elsewhere in order to provide the necessary fuel for its facility. And then we look at two other scenarios. One is if, we chose Suffolk in this case, but it could be any of the member communities buy, maybe buys the landfill and operates it. And so we look at the operational costs associated with what that might look like for the city of Suffolk. And then G1, this G1 was one of these things you added at the last moment. It could have been A4 for that matter. It's similar to the A scenarios, except that Portsmouth doesn't participate with SIPSA. So it's just less waste in the denominator when you calculate the tip fee. Okay? Now, this will, this particular graph, it's in the report. I put it up here just for a real simple reason. To clarify, I think somebody from Chesapeake, Public Works Director, said, "This must have been done by an engineer," and in fact, it was. I don't mean to even look at this, but just to say that there is a, there is a graph, and there is a one exhibit that I've tried to summarize what the basic assumptions are with regards to each of the scenarios in terms of who's operating it, whether it's SIPSA or the cities, whether Waste Energy is in play, what landfill waste is going to, where the ash is going to, who's operating the transfer stations and the commercials. So when you're sitting up at night and wanting to read this thing, have this one particular graph, which is in the report, available, and you can kind of wade through the scenarios and kind of keep track of things.
Do the time, can you speed this up a little? Get us to the critical pieces of it.
There we go. Key findings. Future landfill capacity and needs. The regional landfill is a significant asset to the region, and it has capacity, and it has capacity for expansion, and it makes more sense to do so and to use that facility. It is a key governor. It will control, it'll allow you the ability to negotiate in the future with regards to your disposal fees, whether it's through SIPSA or whether you take your waste to the Waste Energy Facility. It's critical. The Waste Energy Facilities in terms of if you were to go forward with this particular scenario under A1, which is the status quo, we've projected what that might look like in the year 2018 and 2019. I'll make this point with regards to this conclusion, is you can see it's showing prices going up a bit over the next couple of years. What this analysis does not have is what SIPSA plans to do with its reserves after 2013. They have reserves, and they're likely going to use those reserves to further dampen the 2014 through 2018 tip fee numbers. Okay? Just so as you look at that, we, we're not, I'm not in a position to tell SIPSA what to do or not do with the reserves, but that's what they're thinking about. But you'll see that after 2018, their costs are going down, and there's a lot of reasons for that. The debt, you know, significant debt that SIPSA's paying, that you're paying for through your tip fee is gone, and, you know, things are a lot, lot simpler in terms of the overall financing structure of the facility. For each of these scenarios, we did a net present value analysis. We looked at thirty years of costs, projected costs, offsetting revenues that come through various things. For example, landfill gas, SIPSA sells landfill gas. They receive tip fees from commercial waste that comes in. They receive offsetting costs from Wheel O'Bitter on certain things. We evaluated each of those scenarios over the course of thirty years. This particular graph is in each of, for each of the cities. And I use this to kind of step back and take a look at the big picture and say, "Okay, what is this telling me?" Well, this particular thing is telling me that the landfill option is the cheapest, which is the C scenarios. And that's pretty clear, pretty simple. It's the simplest of all the various scenarios. What this tells me is this, just like the city of Virginia Beach had in the eighties, you have, if you continue to cooperate together, the ability to negotiate with regards to your long-term, if you continue to go to the Waste Energy Facility, as to what those costs might be, that you might be able to help yourself. So there's some real value in that. This might look like a somewhat of a sales slide, but there are benefits, and I think you've enjoyed some of those over the years with regards to conserving landfill space in terms of how much material goes into the landfill, looking at the issue of renewable energy from using your waste as an energy resource, reduction of dependence on fossil fuels, it's kind of like a political campaign here. You have facilities that are in place that are, your infrastructure is in place, the facility has been upgraded, they've spent some twenty-five million dollars on that facility. And if you continue to participate in SIPSA, you can get some offsetting revenues that help reduce your overall cost structure. The value of the regional landfill is significant, and so I encourage you to think about that with regards to your future, that if you continue with SIPSA, that helps you overall control from a big-picture perspective your overall disposal cost associated with the landfill. And this is the C scenarios. Now, I mentioned earlier on the relevance of the Waste Management Hierarchy. That goes with, the lowest cost would be the C scenario is landfilling. And so whether you consider that to be your ultimate decision is a function of how you consider that Waste Management Hierarchy. Getting close to my cut off here.
If you had one, I guess for the council, if you had one scenario that benefits the majority of the localities that are related to SIPSA, in other words, we went into this together, what's the scenario that is the, I guess, the highest return?
The highest return is if you landfill in terms of dollars, in terms of the other factors with regards to long-term conservation of your airspace that you have available for disposal, and that's where it gets a little bit more complicated. I didn't, I blew through this. These two graphs show what I'm talking about. Here's on the current scenario in terms of how your landfill is being consumed. Each of the spikes in the periods is when you had to build new cells. So this is under the status quo, and this is if you happen to just take all your waste and dispose it in the landfill. You can see you're building cells more frequently, you're consuming your landfill capacity quicker, and that's an issue, long-term issue. But I think from a long-term perspective, if you can cooperate together, you have times of scale to negotiate, you have instead of, instead of the amount of waste that you have available, you have, you know, four or five times that you can deal with in terms of negotiating. It's a lot easier to negotiate with one entity versus eight entities, and so there's some real benefits of cooperating together. The regional landfill is critical, I think, in that overall picture, as well as the transfer stations and continuing to keep that in the public domain.
All right. Because we're short on time, do you think we should come back?
No, let's just do it.
Let's just do it.
I move the members of council to assemble in closed meeting in our Congress eleven twenty-eleven at six thirty p.m. The purpose is out in clause seven of the Department of Information and Culture. Consultation, please, with council regarding Monday.